For the specific standards for adding a unit, the lot meets the requirement. The total number of dwelling units doesn't exceed three. It's at the max number. And there are no exterior alterations proposed because of the work at the interior and existing. An off-street parking is not required for a lot to 15,000 square feet. The basement or the unit is entirely in the basement, so it meets that criteria. And provided dimensions, which meet finished grade requirement as well. And the application here, the trash trash storage is underneath the stairs, so out of their way. So meets all requirements, and we would recommend approval of the motion.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the recommendation from the chief planning official to issue the conditional use permit? It's been moved and seconded to approve 55 Mill Road with the three conditions listed. All in favor, please say aye. Close the polls. Motion carries. On to our hearing agenda. We have 211 Clinton Avenue for a conditional use permit. Vincent Atkins?
Yep.
All right, Vincent, come on down and tell us about your conversion.
Well, actually, when I purchased the building in 2022, where did I stay?
You sit right there. Don't stand. You're not a court man.
Informed.
This is formal but informal. You need to hear the story.
So when I purchased the house in 2022, it was sold to me and represented as a three dwelling unit, which I'm now pursuing title insurance and stuff like that. But in the process of trying to sell it this year, earlier this year, in the prospective buyer's title search, they came up that it was only legal two dwellings. So and in the research of all the records and stuff, the conversion was permitted, done, inspected, but for some reason, the previous owner never went through this process. So really not proposing anything other than legalizing what was already done, permitted, and inspected. So that I can sell it as a three unit instead of a two unit.
Come on, this is for board questions?
Howdy, neighbor.
I got them.
Just a few straightforward ones to go on the record. Obviously requires a CEP, as we've seen before, because it's an RT district and technically it's adding a unit for the record. So a type-two action receivable, so we don't have to do anything additional with that. Obviously, this older building is on Princeton Avenue. It provides a dwelling townhouse, which is permitted use in the RT district. It would not require group first to all the planning boards, so we're okay with that. And then, as you're aware, there's very similar uses in and around that block. For the specific standards for adding a unit, the lot meets the requirement. The total number of dwelling units doesn't exceed three. It's at the max number. And there are no exterior alterations proposed because of the work at the interior and existing. An off-street parking is not required for a lot to 15,000 square feet. The basement or the unit is entirely in the basement, so it meets that criteria. And provided dimensions, which meet finished grade requirement as well. And the application here, the trash trash storage is underneath the stairs, so out of their way. So meets all requirements, and we would recommend approval of the motion.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the recommendation from the chief planning official to issue the conditional use permit? It's been moved. It has been moved and seconded to approve the conditional use permit for 211 Clinton Avenue. All in favor, please say aye. Close the polls. Motion carries.
Am I, should I, do I stay or leave? Appreciate it. Thanks, guys. And does, like, do I get a document saying that or is it just updating the system?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Say gravel, bring it back in here. For the record, I want to note that 45 First Street was on the circulated agenda and is not on the agenda for today's meeting. Next up is 64 Elm Street, a conditional use permit for the conversion of an existing dwelling townhouse containing two dwelling units to a townhouse containing three dwelling units. David Burton, is that you? All right, floor's yours.
Okay, well, the, when I bought the building, it's two units. The basement had a lot worked onto it. Then I thought, why not make it into a three units? And so I started this process.
So lot is true, use is stored.
Okay, so.
Hi, neighbor.
Okay, so I live here. I live on the top two floors. So it's, there's three, there would be three units. So the top two floors are one unit, the middle floor is one, and then there's the basement unit. The basement unit has its own entrance under the stairs. And it has an egress outside in the back. So there's also a door to the backyard. And that's the layout of it. And there is the shared HVAC for the building. So the whole place is about 719 square feet, 716 square feet excluding the HR. What more do you need to know? There, there needs to be permits for plumbing and for electric. So I had an electrician come in and they said, well, you'll need to upgrade the electric in certain ways to make sure that everything is per code. And also plumber who was saying that the toilet is too close to the, the toilet is too close to the vanity. So I had to, I have to fix that up, but get a permit and be allowed to do that.
How do you, I'm sorry.
It is our time for questions.
Sorry. How do you plan on closing up? I'm assuming that you can access the basement from the inside of the house. So will you continue that or are you planning on closing that up? What are your plans for that?
Well, you access, you can access from internally as well. But you go into a common staircase or a common hallway. And from that hallway is the door to the unit.
Oh, okay, so it has, oh, okay.
So the unit is entirely, will be entirely separate.
Okay, thank you.
Additional comments from the board? Hearing staff?
Proposeal requires a CEP for being in a RT district and it increases to one unit. And it's also a type-two action receivable, some other actions required. It's permitted use. I'd invite us to a dwelling townhouse. And this project was referred to all the planning board just because it's a state-owned property in the vicinity. And obviously, they just referred to local consideration. And now that the block of Elm Street and surrounding area showed that there were a number of similar uses with 15, other than three units and three being multi-unit. The specific standards in RT, the lot meets or exceeds the minimum required area. The total number of dwelling units is three, which is the maximum permitted. And the application here, there would be no exterior alterations. As mentioned, the unit would be the entirety of the basement floor. And the dimensions provided meet the finished grade requirement. And the trash storage would be in an enclosure. So it meets those requirements. We recommend that on the.
Hearing staff, comment, see additional questions from the board? Hearing received none. Is there a motion to approve the chief planning official recommendation for the conditional use permit for 64 Elm Street?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the conditional use permit for 64 Elm. All in favor, please say aye. Close the polls. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So what are the next steps? I have to get.
So the, the same way you fill out the application, that's how your decision letter will come in here.
Okay, and then do I have to contact tax, tax department?
That would be on your side, I would say. When we send the decision, I'll send it to the building department as well for your helping and everything. So they'll clarify it.
Thank you all very much.
All right, next up is a development plan review for 575 Broadway. Conversion of the existing 30,980 square foot building into a dwelling to a unit containing 50 dwelling units, office, journal space, including an existing 15,282 square foot data center. Floor's yours.
Okay, good to see everyone. My name is Joe Pernicchio. I work for Redburn Development Partners. We are the owners of this building. This project was before you, I think, last in February or March. In that time, we've been working with the city departments on their comments. I'd say the big hole that pushes us the water department going back and forth on some utility infrastructure items. But we think we've resolved that to a point, which is why we're back here before you. Plan hasn't changed much. 50 apartments in the areas of the building that were historically offices. The lobby stays sort of as is. It will be used for private and public events. And then the data center on the ground floor will also stay. Happy to answer any questions. I don't know if we have any slides from last time. There's the building, for those that don't know it. Really no changes to the exterior, some new landscaping.
I guess my question, because data centers generally use a lot of water. What is your plan regarding that?
So that has all been reviewed by the water department. That's why we're installing a new water service, a new water pipe to the building. You know, there is sufficient water to the building. There has been the last 25 years. So we're gonna keep it and kind of, you know, preserve it and almost mothball it for the time being. Because, you know, these data centers that people are building in other parts of the country are just way bigger and newer. It's hard for us to compete with that. So I say we're keeping it as sort of just a plan because we don't know what else to do with it. That's, that's the answer to that.
Can you say things, the DEC and state parks and office building right next door?
That's true. If we were to do anything, they would know about it.
SEFCU's not gonna remain there?
No, SEFCU's been out for.
They haven't been there for a while.
Since COVID, yeah.
Law offices were supposed to buy it before, and then they pulled it. Sugar Pie, they're in Corporate Woods now. I know one of the partners, and I can't, it's a, it's a higher. There's definitely more, one of the more prominent ones, but I can't remember offhand the name of it. And this epic tip of my tongue is making me mad that I can't remember. Yeah, my office is right across the street, so I don't know.
As I say, I work right with 625 Broadway, so I'm, I look out at this building.
Yeah, 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 so, yeah. So how do you need?
I live across from it, so.
There you go. Oh, I know, I've been to them.
Yeah, and we're excited to keep that part of it going, right? You know, there was a Halloween party in the building. I think this is public knowledge, I think the mayor-elect is having her inauguration in the building. So we're excited about that, so that will all still continue. A big part of the project is separating the office to the apartment areas of the building from the lobby, so that you can still have those events without bothering future residents.
So just updates from previous, the basic, also the same slides. There's no secret action required, it's just conversion and special. It was recommended to all the planning board previously, where they recommended that shipo was required, but because there's no exterior work proposed, there's no area disturbance at all, it doesn't require special. And otherwise, they recommended, I forget the number of permits.
Do you not have that big parking lot behind you?
Uh, we do, and I also don't.
Isn't that the state?
It's city-owned.
City-owned.
Well, parking authority-owned. So residents will have the option for that. We also have a parking garage around the block from this and a parking lot. And then I, yeah, technically not required to have any parking in the downtown, but there will be parking options.
And to the previous comment about the shipa, as there's no structural exterior work proposed currently, it doesn't require a certificate of appropriateness, but if there were to be any in the future, that would obviously require COA. Recreation space is proposed and has been updated, the floor plan and site plan for indoor-outdoor. And the floor plan was updated to provide walking facilities and the equitarian zoning compliance. As well. So these are two recommended actions as well. There are three street amenities required, seven along Broadway. Zero street amenities are provided along Columbia, and three are provided along Broadway. So they're providing partial along the actual street percentage, but then to the rear of the building, near that parking garage, it's just pedestrian only access, and there are amenities over in that direction. There's a few benches to the rear of the building. And to the next partial waiver request, there are streets, there are trees in that area, but they're not necessarily on the street. So a minimum of one street is required, first they provide these street signage. Four trees would be required on Columbia and, and on Broadway. Whereas they currently have exposing four street trees on Columbia and one in the shared landscaping area and another three on Broadway. So both optional waiver requests, there are waiver requests. Otherwise, the floor plans and segments have been updated to include all the required bicycle parking, trash storage, and exterior lighting. And as Joe mentioned, it's been under departmental review, so DGS signed up on it in October. There had been a lot of back and forth about that kind of pedestrian only access, which is a little bit weird as far as the personal lines and who maintains and who's responsible, but ultimately, we're moving the project forward. It's definitely not a sticking point, it's just something we're kind of hoping to address if we're given the opportunity. Engineering signed up for the project previously, and the water department is working through. There was a bit of a sticking point with water, which got over that. So as Joe mentioned, there would be replacements of the street. Farm utility, is the water line?
Uh, new water line and then just sort of a rerouting of the sewer in the street to connect it to the county interceptor, not the city, CSO.
Right.
So it's all mostly street work.
Yeah.
Replacing water.
So just prior to filing permit, it would have come with that. So we recommend approval of the two waivers and conditional approval of the development review with a condition related to the department of water.
I've read all reports. Any questions from the board?
I feel like we talked about this the first time. This was the first one of the board, but can you remind me why the waivers? Like, why not plant the additional trees that just relate to the grounds?
It's related to the historic kind of brickwork that's done there. You know, also, like, we've mentioned, there's street, there's trees in other parts of the streetscape, just not along Broadway. Side note, the city also has planted lots of trees in the park across the street. So there's certainly lots of trees in the area, but that's sort of the incident. And the same thing for the amenities, there's benches and stuff along the back part of the building, between us and the parking garage, they're just not on Broadway or Columbia.
Right. Is there a motion to approve the waiver for street amenities and street trees?
So moved.
There's second.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve waivers for street amenities and street trees. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Second action, is there a motion to approve the development plan review with the condition that prior to the issuance of the building permit, final approval shall be retained from the Department of Water and Water Supply?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the development plan review with the aforementioned condition. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. The next project is across the street, which is 43 Columbia Street. This is also about the plan review. Additional partial conversion of the existing parking structure into a dwelling multi-unit. With the addition of 37 dwelling units, the state conversion resulted in 22 dwelling units. There are 40 off-street parking spaces proposed to be made, given this is 45 Columbia Street.
43.
I'm sorry, I read that one, this is 45 Columbia. It's 45 Columbia Street association, so it must be multiple properties.
Yeah, it was a long time ago. 45 is painted on the building, but according to the city of Albany, it's 43. When we bought it, we called it 45, and now we have constant confusion in our office. There's multiple properties like that throughout the city. All right, I'll make this rather quick, because I just, we just submitted this last month, and, you know, we still have to go through all the departmental review. So this building, about 25 paces northwest of the last building. This one, we completed partially in 2018, 1920, when we did the Chem Moore and lots of other stuff downtown. This was the old Kennedy Garage, built in 1920s when automobiles were first coming on the scene. It was one of the first indoor garages in the city. At the time, in 2020, we converted just the fourth floor into 22 apartments, and then kept floors one, two, and three, plus the basement, as indoor parking. The residential has done great. It's a great building to live in. I lived here for a few years before I moved next door. And essentially, now the plan is to take the plan we did on the fourth floor and just replicate that down to two and three. The parking has just not done as well as we thought it would. We thought there'd be a little more office folks that would park here during the day to offset the residents that leave during the day. That just hasn't been the case. We, you know, ride between about 50% occupancy on the parking. So we know the residents, you know, we know the residential works. It's a rather easy conversion in terms of historic conversions. And there will still be some parking in the building, so half of the first floor will all stay parking, and then the entire basement, which is accessed via ramps. So residents will still have the option to park in the building. It's a historic tax credit project, so we have to go back to shipo, they have to review it again. That has already been submitted. We don't expect many issues because we, it's similar to the plan we just did six years ago. That is about it in a nutshell. Any questions?
I mean, I know you just said it, it's really early, but I guess, I'm just thinking, if you've got folks living on the fourth floor, like, what, what are the plans to protect the residents from?
During construction?
Yeah, like, noise and air quality and stuff like that.
So there's no asbestos or anything in the building like that as far as, you know, air quality, and dust, we can maintain in other ways. When we did the project in, previously, we did insulate the bottom of the fourth floor already, because it's just to prevent from auto noise. So there is a level of insulation in sheet rock already there. You can access the fourth floor without ever going in any of the other floors, so they won't really see the construction. You know, and noise, you know, will be a small factor, but it'll only be during, you know, working hours. And we'll try limited the best we can. You know, obviously, the, the residents that already live there are the top priority. So if there's an issue, we're gonna have to deal with that then. But, you know, these are 12-inch, sometimes more thick concrete floors. It's, you know, we don't expect that to be a huge issue.
All right, I have another question. It's really more just my curiosity than planning board questions, but you said it's a relatively easy conversion?
Yeah.
I'm looking at that parking garage and the split screen, there was like parking garage and like beautiful apartment. I'm like, tell me more about how that's an easy, is it just?
Uh, it's because it's wide open, so all we have to do is throw up the walls, finish the floors, you know, it's, I say, I say it's relatively easy because of other buildings we've done.
We have to take down walls.
Right, where you're dealing with, you know, 100-plus year old buildings, where this, we put a bunch of money into it, so it's already sprinkler. You know, a lot of the windows have already been replaced. A lot of the structural work was completed already. So it's essentially just an interior conversion of vacant space into apartments.
Parking garage to apartments.
You just, I mean, I can see in the thing that the ramp is on the side, but I'm like, you know, a lot of parking garages, it's like, nothing's even, like, you're always going up or down, you know what I mean? So I'm like, huh, but I'm like, I guess it does look like it's mostly flat.
So I, I park in this, no, yeah, we're just, sorry, I know we all want to get out of here, but, um, so I park in this garage every night. It's connected to the building next door. The ramps were built when cars were much smaller. So it, it's almost impossible to get out of this thing without doing like a three-point turn. So it's not like your traditional parking garage.
Okay.
It lends itself more to a version, honestly.
Are a couple of the units on ramps, like the?
So they are, yeah. If you, if you look at the floor, maybe the photo on the left. The bedroom will actually be built up on the ramp, so you'll be in the apartment in your living room, like, right there in the bottom right corner. And there'll be a few steps up to like another living area that's built up on the ramp. So we are gonna make use of the ramps here. That was a creative idea our architect had.
Is that the one where you had a column, one bedroom plus a den?
I don't know if that was that one. I think those were existing in the other parts of the building on the top part. If you look at 309, if we can zoom in, yeah, look at 309 there. That just has a traditional den there. And then there is a pretty big light well, atrium area on the top in between this and the building next door. That's how those apartments get light.
Staff, who wants?
Yeah, some initial requirements or comments. This project is also type two because it's a conversion, it doesn't meet the thresholds. We'll refer it to planning board, all the planning board, like, this will be really for their December meeting. Just now that we have a little bit more clarification from the originals from middle. The property is also located in the historic district, so if there's any exterior work that you didn't do previously that you need to do now, that would, may require us to figure out appropriateness. But as of right now, it didn't seem like the project's going to include any. A few updates that we'll need in the floor plan and site plan, just addition of the recreation space. 410% of the lot area, either indoor or outdoor, probably be indoor in this case, because the builder takes up most of the parcel. The floor plan looks like it probably has laundry facilities, but.
Yes.
I haven't confirmed that they are in each unit or separate. And the equitarian zoning compliance form was completed and submitted already. The frontage is pretty small on Columbia Street, and then almost nonexistent to the rear. But it does still matter for one street, it might be on Columbia Street. So we need to revise on the site plan or a request for waiver, similar to 575 Broadway. If there's any existing bicycle parking, bicycle parking, that should be included, and then include any proposed on the floor plan as well. Columbia Street was just redone, so there's a moratorium on the street, meaning if any work is done in the right of way itself, it needs to be replaced in entirety, so you couldn't just like patch half of the, you couldn't patch half the street, you have to repay from curb to curb. And same with the sidewalk itself. So if there is any more, more utility placement or anything like that, which is a note from the engineering. I assume a lot of the mechanical equipment was updated in the original conversion, but any new units proposed, just make note that they're on the roof, which I assume they would be. And then the site plan identifies existing trash storage at the rear, which is going to be that updated thing as well. If any exterior lighting would be updated, just note that, and then if there's any signage that would be added to the two. It was just referred recently, DGS and engineering are reviewing, and water department, I think you just submitted.
This morning.
Yeah, this morning, so water department will now be able to do the review with those additional reports. As Joe mentioned, they're probably very similar to mine, so trying to take those previous comments and water department for the engineer. Hopefully move it a little bit quicker. Move it a little quicker on the review, otherwise, you would just recommend either no action or defer until all departmental comments have been reflected and addressed.
Any further questions on 43 Columbia Street?
Is there a difference between doing no action or deferral?
In the agenda, we say action is none, but we have become an advocate of deferring it, and because that's never a wrong thing to do.
Which one, do with us?
Defer.
All right, is there a motion to defer?
Yes.
43 Columbia Street?
So moved.
All right, second?
Seconded.
We moved a second to defer 43 Columbia Street. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. So any other business before the board tonight?
Thank you.
Thank you. Get safely.
Thank you.
This is for review of.
And you have to go downhill.
I do, yeah.
I'm sorry. Even though it's longer, it's easier to go down towards the park and then take that right and go down the hill. Stuff are going down these hills, these hills are straight down. That one's more.
Okay.
Parts of downtown were beautiful, like flat, like there was no snow at all, there's. Parts of downtown were beautiful, like, flat, like, there was no snow at all, and some parts were not.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Sub moved.
Second?
Seconded.
All right, without objection, meeting is adjourned.
Oh, no.
Record timing.